Yeah. 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 I'm late for the meeting. I'm at that party in the state. Yeah. I think it's a lot of meetings. I guess. Ah. There is. It's not a good thing. It's a good thing. It's a good thing. They can't share the shirt. They don't know about the person. And that's my thought. The guy that was right there. Yeah. Are you hearing this? This is the camera. It is. And in favor, well, maybe we're not. I mean, so we got first about responsibility. There's a lot of things. So I'm trying to find where. He said, uh, it's definitely. It's been, yeah. I mean, that's your line. What's that? Uh, 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 that's not enough. So I don't disagree at all that it's offensive. But, um, I know sometimes what you have to name is a lot. I'm sure. I'm sure. A lot of things. I think, uh, 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 I think it's. A lot of, a lot of things. If it was major to do that, uh, but then doing it going around. And you can keep them muted. And, uh, and, uh. And you can just kind of let it be. It's a very, very, uh, 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 we get the problem. That's enough. Um, because of all of the many.
Yeah, Josh, I let in Gray and Bosin.
Josh is in, yeah.
Yeah.
Joshua, the mayor texted me that he had been cut out of the meeting. He was listening to the meeting and then got cut out somehow.
Maybe that was when, uh, when we, when we, he probably joined in right as everybody was getting kicked out. Is he the iPhone? Who is he?
Down, Holly.
It could be.
There's a Frank.
Frank Gastez is him.
Okay, all right. Oh, I kicked him out. I did kick him out. I didn't know who Frank was. My bad. Like, I'll go for it. Uh, Mayor, are you, uh, are you with us now, Mayor? You can unmute yourself.
Yes, absolutely. Now I can unmute myself too.
I'm so sorry. I, I, I'm so used to saying, Mayor County, I saw Frank and I was like, I don't know Frank. Get out of here, sir.
Yeah, watch out. You may be a problem.
Yeah, yeah. Um, Scott, Scott, you think it's okay for me to kind of let the city council members to just join? Know what, know what's happening?
Absolutely.
Yeah, why don't you go ahead and do that, Joshua? I think everybody needs to be aware of what, what's happening here.
All right, so, uh, members of city council, I, I'm making you co-hosts, but, uh, just wanted to let you know that right as the meeting was, right as we were doing some meeting prep, we got Zoom bombed with a bunch of racial slurs and sexist slurs, N-word, et cetera. And in particular named, uh, two of our commission members, Ameren Middlebrooks and Emily Shields. Uh, and so we unshared the screen and then put everybody into a waiting room. So.
Okay. I'm sorry to hear that. No, it's, we've been warned about it, Carl. Uh, we just have to keep our eyes open and I think that they've taken the appropriate, uh, actions so that we can at least try to get started with this meeting and, uh, and share some ideas. So, yeah, it's, it's a new world out there.
Yeah, Mayor, Mayor, this is Scott. Is it okay? Uh, it sounds like we might have a solution to shut off the meeting quickly if that happens again.
Yeah, I think if it does, we need to do exactly that and, uh, we'll have to figure out how to come back and, and do it. There's a lot of interesting, important stuff here. Josh, you, uh, have something?
Yep. Well, when we do, when we do our council meetings, uh, it doesn't allow participants to share their screen. And right now I've got the share screen button on, like I could share my screen, so.
So I'm looking at ours.
Can we get that turned off?
All right. Play with it.
I'm sure it'll happen again if they've done it already.
Mine is, mine is just showing that one participant at a time and only hosts can share.
Yeah, that, that's, that's my setting too.
So I don't think they should be able to. I'm not sure how this happened, but, um, we're aware of it and we'll have to just watch very closely.
Okay, well, like I said, it, my share screen button is enabled and it has not been on past meetings.
I, I think that, that, uh, Josh, I think Joshua made you a co-host, so that's why your, your share screen button would be available. He made all the council members a co-host.
That's just so everybody can unmute themselves, uh, but of course, if you want me to kind of limit the co-hosting ability, I'm, I'm totally fine with that, Jeff.
You know, Joshua, I think that might not be a bad idea to have just you and Kay have the co-hosting ability and everybody else can raise their hand even for city council meetings. City council members raise their hand to be called on even, even though they're unmuted but not co-host. So given what's happened, I think that would be fine.
I would leave maybe Cameron since he's the.
Oh, and Cameron, sure, and Frank.
Do you, do you want to leave me on there too? Yeah.
Yes, Frank as well. I'm sorry, but.
I know Jeff, I know you forget me every now and then.
So I, I have somebody on the call that's a guest. Uh, Kenzie, can you try to share your screen and see what happens? You said you have an option too? I got your text message. You trying to see what happens? She says she's a guest and only she, but as Kay said, it says only hosts can share screen on my option as well, so.
It's still saying I can share my screen too. I think you have to change the settings on the backend of, in Zoom, not the, just this meeting.
It might, it might be how he initially set it up and there, that might be the problem in your actual master file or, uh, controls. It may be, it may be something that was left in there and you're not able to change it once the meeting has been set up.
So Kay, are we going to try to do this as we do city council meetings? And hopefully anybody who wants to make a comment, uh, generally either the civil, uh, human rights commission or city council, they would raise their hand and then we would call them out?
Yes, and Connie did have her hand up, uh, just a minute ago, but I don't know if you're ready for that yet.
Well, as long as we're just making a comment, let's let Connie make, Connie make a comment.
I'm muted. Oh, thank you. I was muted, so. I can't make a comment.
You're clearly muted now.
Good. I mean, I was like, oh, I'm listening, we're muted and I'm like, okay.
Connie, are you talking?
Yeah, no, I'm done. I just want to say if you, if you were going to mute us, I was, I'd been muted, so.
Okay, so I'm gonna limit, uh, co-host abilities and, um, now, I see two of my staff members telling me they can share screens, but then they tried to do it and it didn't work. Connor, can you try real quick if you can hear me? Cause Kenzie said she tried and she said it was disabled once she tried to share.
If you were talking to me, I got cut out because of the storm that's happening right now.
No, I was talking to, uh, okay, so Mr. Shields just started.
Yeah, I just did it, so.
But you're, you're a co-host. Okay, so you're a co-host, but it looks like the, the guest cannot do it.
Joshua, is my, is Scott a co-host?
Yes, you are a co-host.
I'm trying to get it.
I don't need to be if you don't want to.
Okay, all right.
Lucky for you, Joshua, I also don't have the technological ability to do it even if I could.
All right, so I'm gonna limit the co-host so we can get started. Uh, Manisha, can you send a group a message letting it know we'll be starting it? Again, thank you for sending that first one.
Yes, um, are we just admitting them all in?
No, no, no. Just send them a quick message telling we'll be starting in two minutes. I'm a, I'm a disabled co-host abilities for everybody except for, uh, David, Manisha, myself, Cameron, Kay. Am I missing somebody? In the mirror. There you go.
Kay, I'm assuming that what we will do is we'll call the meeting to order and I will ask you to, uh, call role of the council and then I'm assuming that Cameron then, uh, will do the same for the civil and human rights commission to, uh, make sure, uh, call everybody into this meeting.
Okay, County?
Wait, wait, we hadn't let everybody.
Oh, sorry, I thought you were starting it. I got cut out for a second, so I didn't hear it all. I will wait.
All right, I'm, I'm just taking out the co-host, uh, features for most people, so bear with me one moment. Here, read my text message, because they're ready to text me. So Malcolm, I got your texts. I am, I want you to try again once I withdraw your co-host abilities, which I just withdrew it. Can you watch that screen to make sure it's not, something's not popping up there? Manisha, I'm keeping you as a co-host. Doug, I'm taking your input. Okay, thank you, Malcolm. Just have to remember to unmute people. Ute, I need you to print a copy of the slides for.
Hey, Manisha, can you send an additional message to the waiting room? I think folks that have hopped on after that initial message went out, um, don't see the chat box.
No. No. Like a cellphone?
Cameron, I love your, your background.
Five one five.
Two five zero.
Two five zero. Seven eight zero seven? Okay. Okay, I put it in my, into my remarks, my opening remarks.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, David, can you hear me?
Answering questions during the public comment.
Yep.
Um, so, uh, Mayor, city, city council, uh, city manager, should, should we let the persons know once we start the meeting, uh, that, you know, what took place or, or? Or should we? Or should we not allow that?
Uh, Joshua, this is a, a joint meeting, generally speaking, between the, uh, the commission and the city council. And I think that everybody ought to know that, uh, our, all of our opening work is going to be between the, uh, the council staff and, uh, the civil and human rights commission. And like we did even in an open meeting, uh, any comments or opportunity for comments will come after, um, uh, we see and hear the full presentation, I think, isn't that what we have in, in mind, Cameron and Joshua?
Yeah, same, yeah, same as always. Yeah, public comments at the end.
So, you know, our, our apologies to everybody. We are, uh, using, uh, technology. We would love to be doing this in person, but, uh, um, given the pandemic that, uh, is, uh, continuing to escalate in and around Pope County, we're trying to protect the health and wellbeing of all of our citizens while yet, uh, sharing, uh, ideas and, and a lot of the great work that's been happening through the, uh, uh, commission and, uh, through city staff, uh, working to, uh, on the bridging the gap, uh, and reaching for a more equitable Des Moines. Uh, if we are ready, Joshua, you give me a yay, uh, I think we would go ahead and call the meeting to order, uh, for May eighth, uh, in our regular meeting, the Des Moines City Council and the Human Rights Commission. And I would ask our clerk to please take, uh, role of the council.
All right, so hold on one second, man. I gotta open up the waiting room, so.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and I think we should explain to folks why there is the, the delay. So I think it would make sense to just let them know what, what happened.
Okay. Uh, you're okay with that, everybody? I'm, I'm fine with it, so.
Okay.
All right, I am hitting admit all now. Wait, what, what is my screen camera?
It is your presentation.
Yeah, they're going with it. So, uh, you, you can just see the, the one slide, Kay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
George, uh, thank you for joining.
All right, the waiting room is, they're in.
Okay, uh, let's, uh, to the point that was made a moment ago. Uh, sorry to everybody that we're starting a little bit late. This is Mayor Frank County. I'm going to quickly, uh, turn it over to our Director of Civil and Human Rights, Joshua Barde, to kind of explain to everybody, uh, why we're starting a little bit late.
Uh, hello, if you can hear me, uh, this is Joshua Barde, Director of the Des Moines Human Rights Commission. Uh, we do apologize for the delay. We had a, a early Zoom bomb, uh, where someone had bombed, uh, the meeting and, uh, so, uh, just to let everyone know that, you know, there were some racial slurs and things that were posted. I'll just be candid with it. Uh, so if that does happen again, uh, we will have to, um, end the meeting, uh, for, 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 for the protection of the public. So just so everyone is well aware of that, starting out.
Joshua, thank you. Uh, let's, uh, now, uh, for our May eighth, twenty twenty, uh, meeting in the Des Moines Civil and Human Rights Commission and the Des Moines City Council. Let's call the meeting to order and I will first ask our clerk to take role of the city council, please.
County?
Here.
Mantle bomb?
Here.
Gray?
Here.
Westergard?
Here.
Bosin?
Here.
Boss?
Here.
Your Honor, we have a quorum.
Cameron, turn it over to you.
Take role. At this time, can I have, uh, our Secretary Claudia Shabel take role of the commissioners?
Hello, everyone. I am finally unmuted. So this is Claudia Shabel. I'll take role now. Commissioner Middlebrooks?
Here.
Commissioner Shields? Commissioner Knox? Commissioner Oya? Commissioner Cárnez? And Commissioner Shabel here. I have been looking at the pictures and I know our commissioners are here. I think they're muted and haven't been unable to answer, so, Mr. Chair, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Mayor, if you want to start with your opening comments?
All right, uh, thank you, Cameron, and, uh, welcome everybody, not only the public, but the members of the commission and also the, uh, city council. Uh, I'd just like everybody to know that, you know, for years, we've had a lot of meetings and a lot of progress has been made. Uh, we've had panels, we've had community conversations. We've gone out, we've done a strategic plan. We looked at lots of different things, uh, involving issues like safety and justice and opportunity here in Des Moines. Uh, but I remember when, uh, our new, and, and Joshua, if you'll, um, you're okay with me calling you our new civil and human rights director, uh, uh, when he started here a few years ago, uh, he and I thought a lot about how do we, we change it? We've been having a lot of discussions. We entered, uh, he and I attended almost two years of meetings, uh, where we had discussions and, and, um, more discussions. And I think that the two of us walked away finally and said, we gotta get beyond discussions. We gotta move to action and solutions. And, uh, so we, uh, in meaningful outcomes. And so, um, I want to thank the Des Moines Civil and Human Rights Commission, uh, who is trying something different. And, uh, we have community dialogues on issues of safety and justice and opportunity. And we gave the community a voice, uh, and had meetings all across town and putting forth ideas and solutions to address community concerns and, and ideas and dreams. And, uh, we had a, uh, all of those around the city and, and, um, uh, Mr. Director, I, I think we had probably over, uh, twenty to twenty-five of those. And last year in February, after, uh, revealing, uh, the top concerns in the community, uh, through the Bridging the Gap Initiative, the commission put forth a number of ideas and recommendations and presented them, uh, to myself as mayor and the city council and, uh, our city administration and the manager. And as mayor, I gave the directive to, uh, the city administration to begin working on a number of those.
I'm sorry, Mayor, we, we are, we are getting Zoom bombed again right now.
Okay. I'm not seeing it on mine nor am I hearing it, but I get it.
They're letting me do this. Unshared my screen. That's why, that's why it disappeared. So, um, I think we're gonna have to stop the meeting.
All right. Uh, my apologies to everybody that is on and all the seventy-eight people that are on. Uh, we have some people who are not being respectful of the rights of, of others and to present this. Uh, it sounds like we're gonna have to cancel the meeting.
So, uh, one, one, one second, one second, before you cancel it. Uh, somebody's sending, Tara is giving us some advice on what to do, she said. Yeah, let's stop it. Yeah, let's stop the comments. Yeah, they're really disrespectful. I agree.
I just removed that person.